And I'd love to hear from you. Whether you agree with me or not, I think we all benefit from open conversation. I appreciate your time tonight and thank you to the council for your service to this town. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? If not, we'll close out the first section and turn it over to the manager for the manager to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The first item tonight is to request reappointment of John Browning and Mike Kimmel as regular members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Okay. Which one want to say?
Oh, second.
Second. Okay. So Ann made this first and Mike made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Secondly, a request to reappoint Brian Hall as a regular member of the Water Advisory Committee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Third is to appoint Todd Hall and Paul Magnabasko, who are currently alternates, to appoint as regular members of the Water Advisory Committee.
Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Next is a request to approve a proposal from the Seeger's Fence Company to install fencing around the Heritage Farm Park maintenance building. This is both a security and a safety improvement at Heritage Farm Park. The work generally involves installation of roughly 450 linear feet of six-foot-high black vinyl-coated chain-link fencing, including gates. We did budget this project in the current fiscal year at $21,000. We did receive three quotes. Seeger's came in at the lowest at $19,196, and staff recommends council's approval of this proposal.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the proposal from Seeger's Fence Company for $19,196.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, Ms. Snyder?
No, this is a reasonable and important project, as Mr. Bruce said, for security and safety for our maintenance building in the Heritage Farm Park.
Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next, you'll find in your packets, three proposals to address drainage concerns immediately surrounding the farmhouse community center. There are some minor differences in the proposal. Each contractor visited the site, offered their expert opinion on the best way to remediate drainage concerns. All three of the proposals were remarkably similar, which led staff to believe that these were all well-thought-out and were the types of improvements that we need. Essentially, there is some bonding around the house. Council is well-aware that there was a disconnect between the two projects, the construction of the farmhouse and the site work that was done around it. This is work that's needed to rectify those issues. We did reach out to nine contractors to get three proposals. I will note that the low bid from New Garden Landscaping did not include a very crucial piece, which is repair of concrete that would need to be saw-cut to accommodate the drainage. Staff, based on our experience working with Piedmont Site Works, recommends their bid as likely to be the lowest once all the work is taken into effect. And we can also vouch for the excellent work that they've done repairing a drainage issue at Heritage Farm Park. Staff is requesting approval of the Piedmont Site Works proposal for $27,750.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? I make a motion we approve.
Okay, second?
I don't have much to add to this. There was, we've all admit that there was a disconnect. I know Mr. Bruce has reached out to the architectural firm to see what went wrong there. But in the meantime, we do need to resolve this issue. Otherwise, we have an asset that we're not able to fully utilize. So, Mr. Greeson?
You know, I don't support the project, but I'm going to vote for this since we need it. So I'll be voting for it.
Mr. Stone?
March of 2022, the council allocated $200,000 for this project. In June of 2022, the estimate was $455,000. At that time, two council members that are still sitting on this council said it's an armchair estimate, and it's high, and it's going to come down. March of '23, the council accepted Barr's bid of $630,000, which is $175,000 more than the $455. December of '24, we asked to have a meeting with Barr to try and bring down the projected cost at $650,000. No luck there, but let the attacks begin on actually asking to look into the numbers. I'll be the first one to admit when I was wrong. A year ago, I sat here, just over a year ago, I sat here and I told the citizens that this project was going to cost $750,000, and I was wrong. It's now up to $955,000. I will not vote to keep funding this boondoggle. I made a commitment to the citizens when I was elected to start conversations on sports courts. This would have cost less than this house. We just heard from a developer that's going to build, as he said, million-dollar houses that are 3,500 to 4,500 square feet. Well, that's $225 to $285 a square foot. Right now, the Redmond House is sitting at, let's see, $633 a square foot, three times what a million-dollar house in Oak Ridge costs today. By the way, we own the land and we own the house. This is all renovation costs. It's not buying land and building a house. Just like a real business, conservatives would say, wait a minute, this is costing too much. We need to stop. Or at the very least, go, if we're not going to stop, find the money somewhere else. Stop taking money from the taxpayers for this project. So I'll be voting against it. Not because we don't need to protect that house, but too much money has been spent on this project.
Mr. Harton?
I invite anyone in the town council audience and town council, if it rained in Oak Ridge like I drove through from South Carolina, if you go tomorrow, you'll see that clearly this work needs to be done. This work needs to be fixed. There was a gap between the architect and the landscape architect on how to deal with the drainage. But go, you'll see the need for it. As Mr. Stone said, we own the house. It's ours. We need to get it with full occupancy. This is one of the steps we need to get there, and I will be voting for it.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I've always supported this project because I think it's important to our community. But equally important to our community is to be honest about the costs. The number that Mr. Stone is referring to includes the town park entrance master plan, which has extensive sidewalks, trees, plantings, grading, that is not part of the house but is part of the park. We would have had to do all of that work, even if we had torn this house down and put something else up in its place or not. We would have had to connect this part of the park. There aren't a lot of things more expensive than sidewalks. So, construction costs, if you include septic and furnishings, which aren't usually included, the furnishings at least, as part of a construction cost, the house costs $660,000. If you want to include earlier costs of architectural plans and construction administration, there's another $45,000. And if you really want to get nitpicky, you can say, okay, of that town park entrance master plan, that included the small parking lot, and that cost somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. If you include the max of all of that, you get to $775,000. What Mr. Stone also routinely, always consistently forgets to mention is that we received $380,000 in grant funding for this on the merits of the project. That brings the total cost down to $397,000. And I would point out again that the restroom at Heritage Farm Park that was new construction cost in excess of $500,000, and that during the period from March of '22 through '24, that entire period, we experienced a huge amount of inflation. The cost of Heritage Farm Park doubled, as did the cost of other projects that the town has taken on. Looking ahead, the renovation of this house to serve as a community gathering place is an investment. This isn't just spending of taxpayer money. It's an investment both in the unique historic character of our community, which we were just talking about with the discussion about the rezoning of Ms. Carolyn and Sandra's family's property. But it's also, we're expanding the facilities that we offer in our park. I can't tell you how many people have thanked us for saving this house, the last remaining tenant farmhouse on over 140 acres of town-owned property. This house has deep roots in our community, and it will continue. The house has already hosted two baby showers and a few meetings, and will soon host two parties, and it's not even open yet. This is a great investment. Thank you. I will vote for this adjustment.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, just a response here. Even the former mayor recognized that without the house, there wouldn't be the need for all the elements on the corner. Yeah, we'd put a sidewalk around there, but I don't believe that we'd put a million-dollar sidewalk around there. As far as the $380,000 grant money, that's still taxpayer money. Everybody wants to ignore the fact that we pay those taxes too. And everybody, or not everybody, several people want to ignore the fact that our taxes went up because of the vote of this town council, and we're spending it as fast as we're bringing it in. It just doesn't make any sense. To suggest that I'm ignoring or playing fast and loose with any of the numbers, this is the spreadsheet that comes from the town manager. I don't believe he's playing fast and loose with the numbers. You know, I didn't make any of these numbers up. As far as the facts that I laid out, every single bit of this came from either a town council meeting from the Northwest Observer. So I'm not making anything up. These are real costs, real dollars that are paid on this.
The motion's on the floor. Any other comments? If not, I'd call the motion for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's four to one. Thank you. Any other business?
I'd just like to comment that you'll have noticed a lot of construction activity around town, not just along the roadways, but also behind Town Hall. The work to erect the elevated water tank has begun. Crews have been on Town Hall property for the past two weeks. It's a congested area. We appreciate everyone's patience as they're navigating Linville Road and allowing those workers to offload the rebar that they can't get up the construction access. Over the next few weeks, they will be drilling the piles for the deep foundation and testing the stability of those piles. And again, we just appreciate everyone's patience as the workers are progressing with that project. Secondly, just to let everyone know, if they're curious about roadwork status, our Facebook page is routinely updated every Monday with reports from NCDOT on what to expect in terms of construction in the upcoming week to help you plan your commute and to plan your way around town as NCDOT is working on improving our roadways.
That's an impressive drill bit.
It's about as tall as the tower will be.
Yeah, it's impressive. But as I was going out today, there's, every once in a while, they're going to stop traffic in front of that construction site because they have to offload things. So please be on the lookout for that. New business, consideration approved?
Can I just make one?
Yes, sir.
It's your comment. It's, with all the construction, it would behoove every citizen in Oak Ridge and the people that visit on their way through to other places to slow down. This construction, I was making a turn the other day into Town Hall. Somebody came, he had to be going at least 50-plus miles an hour in essentially the edge of a construction zone. So please slow down on both of these projects and do so for the next year to a few years.
All right. New business, we have some very significant event here. And would you introduce the resolution?
In your packets is a resolution of award of bid for construction of 17,000 linear feet of 12-inch PVC water transmission main. This is the project that will connect the Winston-Salem Forsyth County utility system with the elevated tank under construction. The town received five bids at the bid opening two weeks ago. The lowest responsible responsive bid was from Park Construction of North Carolina at $4,416,206. This is fantastic news to finally get a bid that was consistent with what we were estimating and within our budget. I've included what the total cost of the construction of the water main is projected to be, which includes the contract with Park as well as construction administration and observation from the Wooten Company, and a 5% contingency, that is the recommendation of Wooten as well, to bring a project total cost to 4.9 million. You'll see in the next agenda item, but I'll also point it out here that we have grant funding available in excess of the project cost. It's staff's request to consider and approve the attached resolution. And I will note that the approval of the bid is contingent on approval of the award by the Division of Water Infrastructure, who's the primary funding agency for this project.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-06?
I make a motion to approve. Sorry, I wasn't fast enough to, Resolution R 2025-06, to bring a water line, 17,000 linear feet from Forsyth County to our town.
Second. All right. Mr. Harton, you made the motion. You can speak first.
Just briefly, I've been following water in, even though I haven't lived here all that time, probably been following water in Oak Ridge probably for certainly 20, 25 years. When I moved back in '16, there'd been a very large project going for all of Northwest Guilford County, which I think was over $80 million. By parcelling it out and getting us to be able to find a contract, have a contract with town of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, to be able to have the money for the water tank going in, which was the first installment of infrastructure, and the ability to have this system paid for by grant money, and still have some, a little bit left over. I think this is a great first step for the town of Oak Ridge, and it'll probably be another 150 steps over the next 30 years to get a complete water system, maybe even longer. But I think this is a great opportunity, a great first step. So I'm totally in.
Mr. Greeson?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
No comment.
Ms. Snyder?
Well, this is, this is so exciting. I know everyone shares this excitement, but approving this resolution for the water main does represent just yet another, but really huge step forward for the water system that we've been hoping to develop for 25 years and seriously planning in its current form since early in my time as mayor. Thanks to Funding Appropriations championed by former Representative Faircloth and his staff, and Senator Berger, and approved by the entire North Carolina Assembly during my term as mayor, this project is entirely grant-funded. And we are so fortunate to have this infrastructure funding. We have a long way to go to bring municipal water to all of Oak Ridge, and future phases may require us to put more skin in the game. But I'm confident that we can continue to move this effort forward. And even the grant funding that we did get was a huge surprise, even though we asked for it. It still was a surprise that we were able to entirely grant fund this as quickly as we did. So there may be future wonderful surprises. I'm also excited that we'll soon be rolling out options to connect Oak Ridge Water to residents along the path of the water main, and Oak Ridge Elementary will be connecting, and ongoing discussions begun many years ago with Oak Ridge Commons may also be coming to fruition. All of this will help our burgeoning water system become profitable relatively quickly, which will then build up our reserves for system maintenance and expansion. Keep in mind that all of these funds, revenue and expenses are kept, will be kept in our Water Enterprise Fund and remain separate from the town's general fund after this construction is complete. It will also help realize one of the key planks of our Water Advisory Board's strategic plan for municipal water to gain customers quickly. Thank you.
May I add one quick ad?
Sure, go ahead.
I'd be remiss, since I'm on the board of the Fire Department, to not mention the fact that this water main, and I forget the exact distance, 800 feet or 1,000 feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, as it comes up Oak Ridge Road to Linville Road, there will be fire hydrants put in place, which will improve access to water for fire control and fire suppression. And that's a big, big piece of this project going forward.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Sorry, Sam. When I looked up, I thought Fire Department.
Thank you.
This has been a long, long journey. The journey was started by Roger Howerton. I invited him tonight, but he was not able to attend. That journey was also put forward by Ray Combs, and also all the council that's been in phase since the incorporation. The next step was impossible without the step before. So this is definitely an accomplishment of 25 years. So it's definitely something we should be very proud of. So it does open up a lot of opportunities. As I mentioned, fire hydrants, that's a big deal. But also with the possibility and likelihood that we would be able to run the water main down into the commons, and then from there, potentially hook up a number of other customers. As I said, maybe making, advancing this five or six years from our timeline. Right now, the timeline, without anything happening, is five or six years before we probably would be revenue-positive. But with these events that we've been talking about, with our discussions, we may be able to move that timeline up great a bit more. So this is a monumental step, and it's something that took a long time, a lot of councils, a lot of effort. So, good job by everybody. With that, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we have to approve the capital project ordinance.
I move that we approve Resolution R 2025-07, to approve capital project ordinance for the water main construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll just open up for a general comment. Anyone have any general comments they'd like to add?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The exciting part, finance report. Hopefully, it's a boring report. We don't like exciting finance reports.
Normally, I would be offended if somebody kind of made the inclination that I was boring.
I didn't say you were boring. I want the report to be boring.
Just remember, the only difference with CPAs is we get excited about boring stuff. That's the trademark. Good evening, council. Everyone should have gotten a copy of the financial statements. We received the, well, let me just do it here. On the wire transfer, we received $86,572.21 from July on motor vehicle taxes of $11,519.28 for a total of $98,000. This is tracking with the data that I also share from the Fire Department. Very unusual and surprising tax collection, fairly early. Also doubly surprising, I don't know if everybody has heard the news, but Guilford County had a wee bit of a small, very dirty, sooty, nasty fire in the Green Street Office Building where Finance and some other county functions are. This happened back in early July, late June, early July. And as everyone here that knows, especially you, Mayor, with a computer, computers don't like soot. And it's really turning into a very dirty little fire. It didn't do a lot of structural damage, but a lot of contents damage. I tell you that to tell you this. The county finance had to close down. They had to move, get new computers. I talked to the head of emergency services, Jim Albright, and he said the county came to the conclusion that it was much easier and more cost-efficient to buy new than it was to try to clean due to the need for special ultrasonic equipment, et cetera, et cetera. With that said, our transfer from the county was up and almost exactly on time. They managed to rebuild and get the finance department back up. Tax Department is not affected so much, but all the reports and all of our transfers and everything, really, they did a phenomenal job getting back online. I was sweating it initially because of the amount of the damage and as they got into it, because everything is computerized. But they did a phenomenal job. We got a record amount of collections for July, and they are working on, well, they're going to be in their temporary quarters for probably quite a while. One of the things they could discover with the fires, the building has got to be brought up to current code, and given the age of that building, there's some other structural issues the county's going to be addressing. So, all in all, they're in a temporary quarters. They're rolling at 100% almost right now, and I expect 100% in the month of August. So we'll be in good shape. The reports I sent out for the month, we had sales tax, property tax as normal, some interest for July, planning and zoning fees, grand income, the ABC distribution that was already reported, donations with the Veterans Honor Green, and some miscellaneous park revenues. As always, we're monitoring our investments. And then with the staff, it was grant compliance through the month, supporting ARPA, CIP process. And the fun thing for us, the initial audit field work was started. They were out visiting with us for about a day. Most everything else has been done remote with a computer. But turning to the balance sheet, we're holding a strong position at $2.7 million in current assets. Liabilities, $72,683. Total fund balance at $2,680. This does not reflect the capital project funds. Behind this, you've got your income statement fund by fund with income and expenses to each fund. The schedule of the cash deposits, which are at Truist Bank of Oak Ridge and Piedmont Federal. Following this, you've got a detailed breakdown on all income and expenditure items on Schedule Two, which is the longest part of this. Again, fund by fund. And then the debt service assets, our assets, debt service, and the water fund. Overall, fairly good, normal month starting. The good news is, we've started with the audit, and the county, excuse me, the state has actually, due to problems across the state with audits, they have extended the due date for the audits to be turned in until December 31. We are on schedule to complete earlier than that. We had scheduled this year with them coming out earlier with a target of being done in October, as we traditionally have been up until last year. So we should be on schedule this year. Everything's going fairly smoothly. I've already told them the potential for another capital project fund, and we'll make the arrangements on this now that y'all have approved it. The only problem I've got with all the capital projects we've been doing over the last few years is what weird color, unusual color of check we'll pick for this fund. But we will find something. I don't know if polka dots or something may be in order, but we're, we'll be supporting this fund as well. Overall, everything went well. The only other housekeeping item I've got for you is pertaining to the engagement letter. Professionally, we're required to have an engagement letter for the work we do. We have to update these year by year. This is, in essence, the exact same letter as you had last year. Fee's the same, everything's the same. However, I will put a little... However, I will put a little spot in. If you will look at the top, right under the firm logo on the left corner, it says 2103 Oak Ridge Road. I'm very pleased to announce that all operations for the firm were transferred from 8,004 Linville Road, Suite G, to 2103. We started the move Monday morning, and we completed it about 8:00 PM Tuesday night. Systems are all back online. Couple of little tweaks on some new equipment. Your scans that came out looked a little different. Finally, it took me a while to figure out that this thing will scan colors, because the blue ink on the signature shows as true blue instead of as black. So I am very pleased that we are in the new location. And on a personal note, I would like to thank every member of the staff, Sean especially, has been very crucial with all of our plans over the last two and a half years. Bill has given good advice, although my builder drew the line at having my portrait painted on the side of the building so people would know who owned it. But everyone's been really great. The permitting process, the least problematic part of building a building was the town of Oak Ridge. The DOT, eh, half of them were really good, half of them took three and a half weeks for one signature. But overall, everything went very, very well. We were on schedule, opening up. But like I said, the best part of this was working with the town. It was the easiest, and the government that is the closest to the citizens works the best. And it did. But that's everything I've got for you tonight. I would just ask for approval of the report and adoption of the engagement letter, and then at the end of the meeting, I would need to get your signature on two copies, one for me and one for the clerk.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Finance Office's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And then we need a motion to approve the engagement letter. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the engagement letter as presented by Anderson Barrow, CPA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Congratulations on your move.
Another year. Yeah. Congratulations on the move.
It's fantastic.
Is it true you're going to call it Sam's Place?
No, I've not heard anything about it being called Sam's Place. But the nice thing about doing a project like this is when people, especially from other towns that have ridden through, have actually called and said how good everything looks. So my builder, Tim Frazier, did an excellent job, and my partner, Jennifer Barrow. Once y'all, once we finish up everything, we still got some other furniture coming in, but we're going to have an open house, and everyone's going to be invited. And you will readily see that the inside of it is not the battleship gray that Sam usually likes. So the decorating compliments goes to my partner, Jennifer Barrow, and actually to the builder. They basically chose to ignore me most of the time on picking out colors. But we're looking forward to having everyone in.
Committee reports. Finance Committee, I don't think we need that. Water Advisor Committee, would you like to say a few words in celebration?
Spencer Sullivan, 79, 17, quiet place. I give you fair warning, my hearing aids broke over the weekend. They're at some factory somewhere being repaired. So I did not get the opportunity to understand a lot of what you said, but I sure heard the ayes when you voted to approve the contract. Thank you very much. And I appreciate your reappointing Brian Hall and appointing Todd Hall and Paul Magnabasko to our committee. They all bring significant expertise and experience in both development and construction, and they'll be a great help as we go through the next year or two. Committee did meet on July 9th, and the primary order of business was to meet with three local developers, one of whom actually happens to be a member of our committee, to discuss two proposed text amendments related to our new municipal water system. We had a cordial and lively and sometimes loud, as Councilwoman Snyder has pointed out, discussion, and a good exchange of information. I think it was helpful for both them and us. And at our next meeting, we'll take their perspective and ideas into consideration in drafting our final recommendations for those amendments. Our goal in making those amendments is to build infrastructure and to build a customer base as quickly and as cost effectively as possible. The committee, now that the contract has been awarded, the committee can now begin to implement the marketing plan to familiarize our citizens with our new municipal water system and encourage those nearby to connect to it. This will include mailing out a brochure that the committee developed and holding some open houses in the fall, and that will be what we will be working on hard for the next few months. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Historic preservation? Planning and zoning? Shaun, is there anything you'd like to add from the planning, zoning? I think we, they approved the rezoning, and they also continued the two text amendments. Anything else from their meeting?
That was it.
Okay. Board of Adjustment, they're going to meet just to approve their minutes? They met already? Okay. Mountain to Sea Trail? Conservation easement? Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. Special events? We can always depend on Patty.
Patty Dumczewski, 73, 20, Hidden View Drive. Speaking of construction, our current construction of the boardwalk at the Veterans Honor Green is approximately 75% completed. We anticipate that it will be fully completed by the end of August. We have a gentleman there, Shannon Parker, that is unbelievable crafts person that is doing this and just is an amazing person. Compliments all around to him. The third order of our pavers started to be installed today and should be completed tomorrow. The weather affected the pavers being completed. Couldn't put the grout in on the side when it's wet. And our Parks and Rec crew were trained on the installation of the pavers so that in the future, we'll be able to use them all, to use them to install the pavers. I'd like to point out that today is National Purple Heart Day and honors all of those that were wounded or killed serving in the U.S. Military. 9/11, Sunday, September 7th through September 13th, the display will be put up, and the 9/11 ceremony will be on Thursday, September 11th at 9:00 AM at the flagpost in the Oak Ridge Town Park. I met with Fire Chief Ken Gibson, and the Fire Department will be participating this year. I also spoke to Angie at the ORMA concerning their participation, and we're waiting for them to get back to us on this. Our Heritage Day, September 27th, we'll be having an old fashioned muffin baking contest, and details and rules and entry blanks will be on the website. Veterans Day will be on Tuesday, November 11th, and we'll also celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Army, Navy, and the Marines. December 6th, our Light of the Night, we're having, we're in discussions right now with a local sign company for Santa and reindeer display on the lawn. And in addition, we'll be working on the town's celebration of 250 years for our country. Questions, comments?
Great job, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tree Board did not meet. Parks and Rec.
Adrian Eckerenrod, 5679 Timber Trace Way. First, just want to thank the council for reappointing John and Mike. Their seasoned experience is very invaluable to our committee. Parks and Rec Board did not meet in July, as there were new agenda items to discuss. There are some dates I just wanted to let everyone know. The Heritage Farm Park survey is now closed, and McGilby presenting the concept designs based on that survey feedback at our upcoming August 21st meeting. All farmhouse states are currently tentative with the contract requirements that are out of our control. So the soft, excuse me, soft openings are still ongoing, which have provided good feedback and management guidance to the town. September 28th is our tentative open house and first music on the lawn permitting the construction. Other upcoming events, we have movie in the park tomorrow that starts at 6:30 with food vendors, games, and the movie will start at dark. Recommended to bring lawn chairs or blankets. Music in the Park is this Saturday, featuring the Alex Otway Band. And our next and final music in the park for the year will be on October 11th, featuring Retro Vinyl Band.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our second public comment section. Anyone who speaks, come to the microphones, take your name and address, and the floor is yours. Sam looks like he wants to talk. Three minutes, Sam.
I know. True. Sam Andrews, 1829 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge, North Carolina, 27310. I just wanted to publicly and personally express my thanks for your vote tonight for the water system. Jim's already talked about how crucial it is to the fire service. This is a very happy moment, because if you had told me, ah, it's soon going to be 45 years in about another month that I joined up and when we were learning how to throw hard suction tubes off the nose of the 54 fire engine into lakes, ponds, swamps, theoretically, we were prepared to get to a pool before they had fences. But we had to get water anywhere we could, and we were trained on how to use the old truck. And the reason we used the old truck, if you park one of the big ones on the side of a pond, it may just slide on in the pond, the bank may break away. So we had to adapt and overcome. From there, we started having dry hydrants, which enabled things to be a little bit better, a lot better for a while. And then, as we grew, people didn't want a fire truck coming into the pond or whatever. The state changing bridges and things like that, so we've had other issues. So we've had a constant struggle for almost 45 years to have a sufficient water supply. Supertankers and things like that that we do, that was the evolution. I very rarely say this, but I'm hoping that before I finish my fire career, I do not have to be on a truck committee buying another supertanker to move water around. This is one of the greatest things that y'all could have done for the community, even with the existing structure we've got needing to haul water with the tankers. A hydrant scattered out around the district gives us an immense strategic advantage and a tactical advantage on fighting the fire. When we don't have to send another engine to go to a dry hydrant to pull draft with manpower and hoses pumping in the truck that you can set up, you don't have to have another truck there, it saves you extra manpower, saves you an extra truck. So these things that you're doing are efficiencies that will also come down through the fire service over the next few years. It will allow us to change our strategic and tactical operations, more efficient use of manpower, and help us be more cost efficient, because, you know, just taking one tanker or one engine out of the rotation will save us a truck and anywhere from two to four firemen who can be at the scene actually fighting fire. So I'm very excited to see this, and I want to personally say I thank you, and I don't feel that I'm going out on a limb when I say thanks on behalf of all the members of Oak Ridge Fire and Rescue, past and present. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Anyone else who should speak? If not, we'll move to council comments. Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah. Ridge Fest is coming up September. If you're interested in participating or volunteering there, see someone with the Merchants Association. Heritage Day is in September as well. Contact Sander here at the Town Hall if you want to set up a booth or if you want to volunteer. Nonprofits get places for free, but it's always a fun time. Just quickly, rezoning, they're never easy. Sometimes they might seem that way, but they're really not. Almost always, they impact individuals or neighborhoods, and it's a situation that weighs on you. But if you like change, but change is kind of an inevitable thing, the ordinances that we have route us and require us with our decisions to an extent. And then we've got a responsibility as far as property rights. And, you know, while, again, a certain person may not want the property beside of them or behind them developed, the rights of the people that own that property are very real. So please don't take the, the quick pace of a rezoning as being anything other than there's a structure to it. I believe with all my heart that everyone up here takes that very seriously, and they take it to heart with these decisions. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Mr. Harton?
A couple of things. First, I believe on Monday, there is a Red Cross Blood Drive at Oak Ridge Methodist in the afternoon. Oak Ridge Methodist Blood Drive in the afternoon on Monday. Relative to water, I want to thank the committee. I've been kind of involved with that for four-plus years now. It's been a great committee. You heard tonight, there's changes, but the fact that we hit this milestone tonight with the decisions we made, it's just the beginning of a whole lot of work for many, many decades. So we have a great committee going forward. I want to thank Spencer especially. There's probably no one who knows more about water and water systems in the town than Spencer, and he's been a great member, leader, chair, and liaison back to the Town Council. So thanks to the Water Committee, and thanks to the future, to what they will be doing, mostly on marketing and planning activities for future neighborhoods. The last thing I want to thank, the council, mayor and council. Today was a difficult day for me. But it's been a difficult three years for a good friend of mine and his family. So I was happy to go down and support him, and I couldn't have done it without the support of this council. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ann, thank you, Mike, and Mike, and apologize for being late, but, you know, I got here as quickly as I could. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Ditto what Mr. Harton said about the Water Advisory Committee. We couldn't have done it without them and especially without Spencer Sullivan. And thank you, Councilman Stone, for your thoughtful comments on the rezoning process. Like you, it feels awkward to me that we have to, that we move forward so quickly, but I do agree, we're all thoughtful about this, and I think maybe more than most council members end up understanding the sort of difficulty of change in our community almost more than anyone else, because we see it from so many people's, through so many people's eyes, and it is difficult. Thank you, Patty, for mentioning National Purple Heart Day. That's important for us to remember. And I want to thank again the new principal and assistant principal for being so eager to meet people and reach out to the community with their two meet and greet sessions today. That was, I learned a lot, and I was able to make some good connections with them today. Thanks also to everyone who attended tonight, either in person or virtually. We're grateful for your interest and involvement. And in terms of involvement, I also want to announce in this forum, something that I've already announced online on social media, I've decided to run for reelection to Town Council. I enjoy my service to the town, and I want to continue to make our town the best it can be, both in terms of preserving what we all love about it, its small-town charm and its natural and historic resources, but also planning for its future. I believe I have the vision, the integrity, the experience, and the energy necessary to accomplish these goals. So I ask each of you to consider the work I've done on council, both as mayor for four years and as council member for four additional years, as you consider your voting choices. Most of all, I encourage everyone to make sure they're registered to vote and to mark your calendars to vote on November 4th. And as a reminder, I'm always open to emails, texts, sitting down and talking to anyone who has questions or comments for me. Thank you.
Make it quick. Agree, just want to reinforce, the Methodist Church does-
Agree, just want to reinforce, the Methodist Church does have a blood drive every even month, on the second Monday of every even month. So, this Monday, the August 11th, they do have a blood drive. I will have some snickerdoodles there for you, but Bob Yarborough does a great job with other stuff, too. Want to reinforce that if you're not registered to vote, please make sure you register vote, and make sure you vote, no matter who you're going to vote for, please get out and vote. One little thing, I'm with the Lions Club. We're installing what we're calling a tranquility garden in the Heritage Farm Park, and the design is, is that it'll be a reflective area where we will plant trees and plants and have some benches and things like that to remember members of the Lions Club that have passed. But it's also going to be open to the public. So, if you're thinking about someone you might want to remember, there'll be a place over there for you to plant a memorial tree for that. We will accept donations for the tranquility garden, so if you're interested in something there. But it's still in progress, so we're working out the details, but the concrete has been poured. But if you want, you can take a nice walk over. It's behind the multipurpose fields, but we're really excited about that. With that, oh, the other thing is, with the meet and greet, the biggest thing they talked about, which no surprise, is drop off and pickup for children. NC DOT does have a project slated for them to start in September or October that'll add a third lane to the pickup and drop off area. That's not going to fix everything. So, the biggest thing they've been asking for is make sure you have patience and understanding that things aren't always going to be perfect. But also, if you are dropping your child off or picking your child off, please be respectful of the plantation development and also 12 Oaks, to make sure you're respectful, there are driveways and things like that. So, that's the biggest thing they talked, at least the session I went in, that was the biggest thing they talked about was that. The town does provide two weeks of sheriff's support to help with that, but again, it takes a little while for everybody to get used to the new system. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Thanks.[1755.87][1755.87][music]